Before we begin with the public hearings, I'll take a roll call. If you state your name and if there are any conflicts of interest, please indicate. Start on my left.
Ross Flom, no conflicts.
Deborah Jensen, no conflicts.
Jay Munroan, no conflicts.
Maria Wynden, no conflicts.
Kermit McKenney, no conflicts.
Just like to make a note, the items noted on this agenda with a star will require a public hearing and legislative action by the municipal council. So, any recommendation we make on those items will be forwarded on to the municipal council. Items without a star are administrative and only require the approval of the planning commission. We'll begin with item number one. Provo City Public Works Department requests an amendment to Provo City, to the Provo City Major Street Plan for the extension of 620 North Street from Lake Shore Drive to Lakeview Parkway. And Brian Maxfield will be introducing this item to us.
This item is listed, it's really more of an introduction at this point. There has not yet been a neighborhood meeting and other input received for this item yet, but we didn't want to introduce it so that you're aware of it and know where it is. Basically, it involves... Oops. A map that... Am I pushing the side, not the other one? We've got David Day here from Engineering, maybe talk about the whys and wherefore's of this. There is a, I think, a neighborhood meeting coming up later this month and, you know, so we can get some input. This map shows the city street system with major arterials in the collectors as they go through the city. As you can see, this area doesn't really show up very well. Let's see if I can find it. Maybe David could point out. I've got some other ones here. Here's 620. And so what we do is come down, straight down and connect to Lakeview Parkway down this area. So, it's okay, I'll turn it over to David.
Yeah, my name is David Day. I'm with Provo City Public Works. Like Brian mentioned, we just wanted to introduce it to you tonight as a planning commission. We haven't had a chance to have a neighborhood meeting and we want to have that meeting so that you have that feedback from the neighborhood before you make any formal recommendations. But what this is, is just extending the master street plan from Lake Shore, right here where the intersection is, at Lake Shore Drive and 620 North, out to this other, there's a dotted line here if you can see it, that is an existing master street plan for Lakeview Parkway. So, that's the location, just extending it from here out to there. So, I don't know if you had any questions about that, but we should be having a neighborhood meeting real soon to discuss that and get that feedback. So, we'll be bringing this back to you as soon as we get all that information gathered.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Day? Thanks. Okay, I think I'm ready to hear a motion on this item.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Mr. McKenney.
The recommendation by the city is that we move this to the October 12th meeting. So, I would motion that we would continue this item to October 12th meeting on 2016 on item number one for Provo City Public Works, who is requesting an amendment to the Provo City Major Street Plan for an extension of 620 North to, from Lake Shore Drive to Lakeview Parkway.
Second.
Thanks. Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Move on to item two now. Nathan Orm requests approval of a conditional use permit for an outpatient program under land use 6515, behavior, drug, and alcohol treatment, located at 890 East Quail Valley Drive in the PO professional office zone in the Sherwood Hills neighborhood. Robert Mills will be introducing this item to us. I did want to say a couple of things about this item and how we might proceed in the, with this item. Given the nature of the item, I think what we'll do is we'll allow Robert Mills to introduce us to the item, allow the applicant to stand up and speak. Given that so much of this item hinges upon that restrictive covenant, I think we'll turn the conversation to the planning commission at that moment and to determine if we feel like we can make a decision based upon how we feel about the restrictive covenant. And at that point, we'll go from there. I know many people have commented about this item, and I'd imagine there are many I suppose we could allow the neighborhood chair a chance to speak and then go from there, if that's your recommendation. Okay. So, we'll go to that point, have a conversation, and then determine how to move forward from there.
Okay, thank you very much.
Can you clarify that? Will it be no public input on the restrictive covenant?
I think what we'll do, because of the nature of this conversation and the restrictive covenant, I think that we'll have, we'll return the conversation to the planning commission after we've heard from the applicant and then decide what to do from there. If we feel like we need to solicit more information from the public based on the restrictive covenant, we can. What we're trying to avoid is a lengthy conversation about the nature of the business. I think because what we're talking about is, really hinges upon the restrictive covenant, then we'll have a conversation there and go from there.
But is it the input of the public important on the restrictive covenant, whether it's wise to continue it and the reasons why it should be continued? Isn't that relevant?
We'll talk about that when we get to that moment that I outlined. Thank you.
Okay. So, yes, this application is for a conditional use permit to allow an addiction recovery center at the location here on the screen. This is at 890 East Quail Valley Drive in the Sherwood Hills neighborhood. This is an existing building that was constructed in 1977. So, here's a brief history of the site. In 1977, this was a racquetball club that was approved by a conditional use permit. In 1980, this site was rezoned from R-18 PD to professional office. At that time, a restrictive covenant was recorded that prohibited any other further, any other current or future use permitted in the PO zone other than executive office. And that's the document number there. The history of the site continues down to 2016, where a business license was recently approved to allow a corporate office for an alcohol and drug rehabilitation center that's located in Cache Valley, Utah. So, currently at the location, they do executive office work for a location that's off-site. Going straight to the nuts and bolts of this issue is the restrictive covenant. This is a copy of it and sections of it have been pulled out that kind of explain what the issues are and where we are currently. When the restrictive covenant was implemented back in 1980, the specific land uses were limited to executive office use, as you can see there. Also, if you look at number 2B on line 29, the undersigned or their successors in interest will forego any other use than that set forth above, even though an alternate use might be allowed by applicable zoning at some future date. So, under normal circumstances, this type of use would be allowed at this location with a conditional use permit application, which is why the applicant went ahead and implied this information. This covenant was found later through an enormous amount of research and providence to find this. This is the second page of the restrictive covenant. This is the part that essentially makes the city kind of the beholder of this covenant where if at any future time the city felt it would be in its best interest to forego this covenant, they would need to hold the Provo City Municipal Council. It used to be called the City Commission, now it's called the Municipal Council. We need to hold a public hearing to vote in favor of removing that covenant for the property. Based on this specific restriction, staff's recommendation to the planning commission is that if this was to move forward, it would essentially be violating a restrictive covenant, which would be illegal. And so, we recommended denial of this application based on that point. And I'm available for any questions.
Okay, any questions from the commission for Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Flom.
Thank you, Robert. Just a couple of clarifications. So, one, only the city council can remove or revoke the covenant, is that correct?
That's our understanding.
Okay. And then the other one is that it says that under the covenant, that a corporate, that only a corporate office building for accounting and billing and human resources management services could be used there, or an executive office, correct?
That's correct.
Which is what it's currently being used for, correct? However, if, and later says on page three of our staff report, that a behavior alcohol and drug treatment type facility, which is allowed under the conditional use, which is allowed under the zone, Provo City views the behavior alcohol and drug treatment as separate, a separate entity or separate organization or separate classification.
Separate use.
Separate use, other than corporate office type or executive office.
Yeah.
So, even though it could just be meetings for both executive office and alcohol behavior and drug treatment, they are still categorized as separate uses, that is correct? And that the latter, the alcohol behavior and drug treatment is categorically not permitted within that covenant, is that correct?
That's correct, based on the fact that with the latter, with a behavioral type of situation, you have clients coming to the site.
Correct.
And things like that. The same thing would be true if, say, there was a doctor's office that went in, the restrictive covenant would limit that use as well because of that idea of, instead of just having a single office that's doing the administration of various other offices located off-site or not, now you've introduced the situation where you have clients coming or patients coming or things like that. And that goes beyond the limits of the restrictive covenant.
Thank you.
Mr. Bevran.
And part of the staff basis for that is that our zoning ordinance is based on the standard land use code. And under the standard land use code, office uses like Robert has described are, in the code, as land use 6390. Those are office-type uses that he's described. Behavioral treatment, like, has also been described as land use code 6500. So, even the standard land use code upon which our zoning ordinance is based differentiates between those two in that way.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Okay, we'd like to invite applicant to come forward and...
I'm Nathan Orm, and this is...
Hi, I'm Steve Aceavito.
You have any questions? We've, okay, go ahead, Steve.
Well, I have a question for you. We realize that we're fighting an uphill battle. It's pretty clear about that, but we are very passionately excited about what we do. We feel like it's a noble work and we really want to, I mean, we really have the best interests of our community and people at heart here. So, one of the things we want to explore is, is there any possibility, on item D there, it says that these restrictions and covenants may be canceled by the City Commission of Provo City only after a public hearing. If I'm reading that right, and I may not be, but if I'm reading that right, are we saying that there's a possibility that the restrictive covenant could be canceled if the city council decided to do that? Is there a possibility?
Yes, if you petition the city council to amend the covenant, the city council would hold a public hearing and they, it would be at their discretion as to whether or not they thought that was appropriate.
Okay, okay, because we're not here to, I mean, we realize we're in the minority here, but we really feel very, very strongly that we can bring a real service and value to Provo and to the community and stuff. And so, anyway, we would like to pursue, you know, that additional option. Do you have any questions of us as to what we would do or not do there?
Any questions for the applicant from the commission?
I do want to point out, a couple of things I do want to point out is, one, nobody, no one stays there overnight, no one receives meals there overnight, no one, we do drug testing every time they come into our doors. There is no prescribing of drugs or prescriptions. So, that issue, I want to put that to rest right here, is that no one is coming in and using drugs while they're at our facility. If they ever do fail a drug test, a UA, then they are kicked out of the program.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Oh, excuse me, one question from Mrs. Wynden.
So, what are your operating hours? You have classes, groups, therapy?
Yeah.
And there's a school and seminary building right next door. So, are you going to be offering those during school hours?
Yeah, what we're going to be doing is, there's going to be day classes and evening and Saturdays. And so, what is, is for people who have either, A, have been through drug rehab and have overcome their addiction and now want additional support, am I talking too loud?
Nope.
Okay.
That's right.
They want additional support for their addiction, whether it's to drugs or alcohol. And so, they come and we will be offering classes that are educational and form of inspiring, and also individual and group therapy. So that, you know, and you all know what an idea of a group therapy is, a group of people talking about their challenges and their issues and what we can do to overcome them.
Just to answer your question about the hours, our operating hours during the weekdays would be nine, 9:00 AM to noon, and from 6:00 PM till 9:00 PM. So, it wouldn't be during, I mean, the students would already be in school when the clients would be coming in, and then after school as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Okay, we'd invite the neighborhood chair to come forward. Neighborhood chair of the Sherwood Hills neighborhood, present.
So, several neighborhoods here, I mean, this isn't the Sherwood Hills neighborhood, but the city, it's a small neighborhood because of the location and the geographical factor. So, there's our area rep.
I was going to speak last as the northeast area rep, but I will go first. There's some confusion about where this actually exists because it's right at the juncture of four different neighborhoods. The Sherwood Hills neighborhood is where it currently is located. The city council is actively looking to move it back to the Edgemont neighborhood, which, can you put the picture back up of the land? And I have a red thing. So, if you look at this particular piece of property, it is in the Sherwood Hills neighborhood, which is basically from here north in Provo. The Tempeview neighborhood is this neighborhood here, and the Edgemont neighborhood comes from right here and has all this area, including the high school and the seminary building. It seems to us that it's more appropriate to be in that neighborhood. The Tempeview neighborhood and the Edgemont neighborhood are on the same plateau, the same bench. Then if you move up to Sherwood Hills up here and Indian Hills down here, they're basically up on the next bench. So, we have the neighborhood chair here from North Tempeview, from Edgemont, and from Indian Hills, and then I'm the area rep for these and three or four other neighborhoods north. So, Bonnie, who's the chair for this area, and Marion, who's the chair for this area, are here. I think it's more germane if they speak initially, and then I can come up and give an overview from the whole northeast area, if that works for the commission.
I think so. That sounds good. Good way to proceed. When you come to the stand, if you'll just state your name and where you live.
Bonnie Morrow, North Tempeview Chair. Marion Monahan, Edgemont Neighborhood Chair. Personally, I always thought this property was in my area. I sort of counted it as being in my area, so I was surprised when to find that out. Personally, looking at this, my boundary runs up the middle of 3650, so I really have no homes close by. The schools are in my side of the neighborhood. The covenant, I think, is of reason enough to turn this down. However, as I listened to them present to us, several things really disturbed me. One was a shaky background and a closure in Logan against a similar type there. Secondly, I asked them how many professional people they would be hiring, and they said they had no license. And that really set me back because to me, you should have a license before you start running a business. And last but not least, public transportation in this area is nil. The closest is University Avenue. They said they had a van that would pick people up, but I still feel that most of their clients are probably going to be walkable clients. I could be wrong, but that's my feeling. And those people will be walking through our neighborhoods and by two schools. So, those things hit really close to home when I heard their presentation.
Thank you.
I've had many neighbors contact me.
Can you state your name?
Bonnie Morrow, North Tempeview.
Okay, yeah, you did say that, sorry.
It's okay. I've had many neighbors contact me and have respectfully asked that this be denied. Furthermore, they've asked that we reexamine the current zoning and revert it back. We will be pursuing that. Also, I have a list from the PTA of people who have signed and petitioned to respectfully deny this proposal for the drug rehab center. It will adversely affect property values around, I have the homes right across the street from this proposal, and it will adversely affect their property values when they try and sell their homes. Also, I've had parents tell me that they will withdraw their students from Edgemont Elementary and the high school should this pass. So, it will also affect our schools. So, I'm reporting that into you. I'm happy to turn this over to the planning commission.
Certainly, please bring it forward and... Thank you.
And lastly, I'd like to express that we do have sympathy for this type of work. I have a brother-in-law, a nephew, and a niece who are on heroin. They have been in and out of rehab. It is close to my home, close to my heart. I understand the challenges that these people are going through because it's in my family. But I also understand that this is the wrong location. This should be by a hospital where these people can have the care that they need, not by an elementary school and not by a high school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll try and make comments that haven't been really mentioned.
If you'll state your name again, sorry, just for the...
I changed it.
We know who you are, but...
Pull it out back there. My name's Mike Roan, and I'm the area representative for northeast Provo. One of the concerns that came up, and I'll be really brief since this isn't apparently the full hearing part, it's just about the underlying restrictive covenant. We feel like the restrictive covenant should be honored. If the city wants to, if the applicant wants to go to the city council and have it discussed, then that's probably appropriate. But from a concern standpoint, you have a copy of the minutes from our meeting where we had the area meeting that I conducted. And some of the concerns that came up there is that the majority of these people worked for the Sherwood facility in Logan, which was shut down and had some investigation issues. They've discussed that, but I think there's still some concerns that relate to that facility being closed by a number of agencies coming in that had concerns about the operations. I've also done some additional research about the underlying property, which is of concern to me. The underlying property is owned by an owner who bought the property about a year ago. That owner is already one year in arrears and taxes, and it's owned in a holding company. I tried to find out who is in the holding company, and they have an agent up in Alpine. I called the Alpine City offices where they register for businesses to find out. I used the name of the agent and I used the address. They had no business license for the agent. The address they looked up, and according to the web, there's 112 different businesses operating out of that address. The city of Alpine had four listed, all four, they had five listed, four of the four were in arrears and defunct and not operating. And the person that I think owns the property, based on my efforts to try and pierce the LLC veil, has had numerous legal issues relative to how they own property, payments, legally operating, and things like that, which I think are of concern. When you add it to all these other things, I just have lots and lots of red flags that go off relative to my interest in the northern part of the city. I don't know if Bill added the copy of the newspaper article or Robert added it to the information that I provided, but I did include a copy of the article from the newspaper up in the Logan Herald Journal. If you didn't get a copy of that, I'll provide one to the chair and you can circulate it. But I think, without trying to be repetitious, we're in sympathy for the need in the city, but don't feel this is the right location, and then have some other concerns relative to ownership, past operations, legal issues and those things.
Thank you. Are there any other neighborhood chairs that wish to speak?
I'd like to speak. My name is Joseph Felder.
Are you neighborhood chair?
No, no, I'm not a neighborhood chair, but my parents live just south of this location.
We're going to stop for just a second and pause in the action, and then we'll kind of resume from there.
Okay.
If you wouldn't mind.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, I think that, I want to try to articulate myself again in light of some of the comments that have been made earlier. I think what I want, what I intended to do was...
Neighborhood chair.
Oh, sorry.
I'm Nancy Wilson. I'm the neighborhood chair of the Nan Hills, just directly east of this proposed project. And I'm in pretty much agreement with everything that's been said. I also understand and honor the work that they're doing. I think it's very important. I think the population that they're dealing with is valuable, important, and vulnerable. And I think that our high school students also are valuable, important, and vulnerable. And I think that having two vulnerable populations so close, they're talking about having a kind of a lounge area with TV and ping pong, and just kind of a hangout place, I don't think it's the right place. And that's my comment to my neighbors. Many of our neighbors also obviously have concerns. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I thought it'd be worth pausing here for a minute to discuss, as a planning commission, just our kind of sense of this item, of this proposal. Obviously, there's much to say here, but I think my hopes are that if we can establish some sense of where we're at on this item right now, then we can reduce the need for comments that may repeat themselves, and then we can decide how to go from there as we open it back up to the public or not. But if we wouldn't mind having a brief conversation as a planning commission about... a brief conversation as a planning commission about kind of our sense of the restrictive covenant, then again, hopefully that will help facilitate any conversation that follows. Expedite is what I meant to say. So, open it, Mr. McKinney.
A comment, Mr. Chair. I was looking forward to hearing the applicant's reasons why they felt as though the restrictive covenant should be lifted in light of some new information that we've received. And I really didn't get the sense that there's been anything that's changed in terms of, in context to why that, the restrictive covenant was put in place. Certainly from the comments made by the citizens, you know, there's obviously a negative feeling towards this. But as we, as I look at just the restrictive covenant itself, and why it was put in place originally, I don't see where there's been anything, any new information presented to me that would persuade me to believe that there's a necessity for a change there.
Thank you. Mr. Flom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think with the restrictive covenant in place, there's, there's really not anything that we can do. We can't overturn that covenant. We can't overrule it. Whether, even if we thought it was a wonderful idea, and if the residents were fully 100% behind it, we still couldn't approve it. And if the applicant chooses some other avenue to try and persuade the city to remove the restrictive covenant, they have that choice. Whether, and I think that's doubtful that the city would, would entertain such a motion to remove that restrictive covenant. I don't think we have much of an option other than to deny it, fortunately or unfortunately, depending on where you are on offense.
Okay, Mrs. Jensen.
Thank you. I would agree with Mr. Flom's statement. The covenant's been in force for almost 40 years now. It seems to have served its purpose, and I don't think that we have hearing from the public and hearing from the petitioner and the planning staff. I don't think that we have any basis to override that at all.
Okay. Mrs. Wynden, I'd love to hear what you're thinking.
While I agree that the, the treatment facility is to be commended for the type of work that they do, and the north part of the city definitely needs this type of facility, I don't think that we have the, I don't think that this is the right place, and I don't believe that we have the ability, the, the right to be able to overturn this. I think that restrictive covenants are not put in place very often, and when they are, it's for a very good reason. And we need to honor the restrictive covenant that was put in place.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think we've heard from, from the planning commission. It is a public hearing, and I do want to honor the nature of the public hearing, but I think it's important to establish that, I think the commission is unanimous. We didn't take, I didn't accept a motion, we didn't vote on a motion, but it sounds to me like we're a motion to be made right now. It would be to deny this proposal. If you feel like you have something to say that, that you feel is vital in changing our minds about that, I'd invite you to come forward. But just recognize that I think as it stands now, we would, we would vote to deny this proposal. And anything that you say that would only further our opinions on that front might be unnecessary. Okay, open it up to public hearing. Each person has no more than three minutes.
Okay. Again, my name is Joseph Felder. I'm a therapist that works at Circlodge. These exact problems came up when Circlodge opened. And Circlodge has actually been quite distinct in its reputation in the community in Orm and also in Sundance. I've been working in the field for 15 years. I've seen a lot of people suffer from the addiction. And I need, I need each of you to know. I also need all the homeowners around this facility to truly understand this. If there's anybody that understands the needs of this population and understands the needs to actually treat these people the way they need to be treated, it's me. We need this facility. We don't have enough facilities in Utah County to treat the need of the people that are suffering from addiction and alcoholism. And it's only getting worse, it's not getting better. I am absolutely begging you to take a look at this in a proper context, you know? I understand the fears. I've heard them all. Trust me, you know? There's a lot of fear, and there's a lot of misrepresentation when it really comes to working with addicts and alcoholics, and the fear that comes from, how, how is this facility going to lower, okay, property value? How's it going to affect the high school? How's it going to affect the elementary school? How's it going to affect the neighbors? But these people are all around us. You might even have some here in the room. I'm a recovering alcoholic, okay? There's no way I could get help, you know, with the spirit that's been shared tonight. I'm telling you guys, I'm begging you to reevaluate this. These are our brothers and our sisters that live right next door to us. You know, statistically, what they're saying is every 10th house in this valley, there is somebody suffering from addiction. That's a lot of people. Of the, of all of those houses, do you realize that only 4% of those people, 4%, are ever going to get treatment? 4%. That is not enough. So I think I've done enough to share with you, from a professional's perspective, what we're really dealing with. And I would ask you to really reevaluate where your minds and your hearts are looking at this, because it's all over. It's not going anywhere, and it's getting worse. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, members of the council. I'm Richard Knapp. I have been involved with the petitioner financially, and also live in the Sherwood Hills area that's in close proximity to the proposed site here. I wanted to say a couple of things because back when that building was repossessed from Science Bank, and I know it because I came in to fix it up. I remember walking through the parking lot, and I remember seeing what I saw. And I saw a lot of alcohol containers. I saw used condoms. I saw things that would make you think that maybe we needed to fear more from the high school than they needed to fear from us. It's just, I say that only because that is, in fact, the case. We had to, we have to patrol the parking lot at night because there's a lot of, well, lovemaking going on in motor vehicles that would otherwise happen there in this parking lot. And the fact that it's now being used and patrolled, I think is something that has benefited the community and the school, you know, as well as our offices. You know, it's been said that the proposal is to put a treatment center in this area, and I want to remind everybody that it's not a treatment center that's being proposed here. We're proposing to use this office building as office space for therapists and other people who will be involved in the treatment of these individuals that suffer from addiction. Our treatment will be late-stage treatment, where these people will have already been possibly to a residential program, or at least far enough along in their treatment, that they will not, not be a current problem to themselves or to the community, and certainly not to the schools. It's funny because I, I look, and it's not on the map, but we have a pharmacy or two that I think may even be closer to the elementary school than that building. And we don't think of that pharmacy as being one of those precluded businesses that we can't have, you know, close to our schools because, you know, people get drugs there at the pharmacy, right? So that's something to keep in mind, too. But what we plan is not to violate the restrictive covenant that the council's so much concerned about. It is only to-
We'll wrap it up here in a second.
Yes, thank you. We're not violating the restrictive covenant. We're not asking you to overrule it. It will be only used as office space or executive offices. I guess that's what it means. It's not a proposed new use in the sense that something other than office space will be going on there, or it won't be used for something else other than that.
Thank you. Can I just pause for a second and just return this to staff? I mean, because this, what Richard, Mr. Knapp's talking about, I think is really at the crux of the matter. He's suggesting that it would fall within the restrictive covenant, that it would be considered executive office. Yet what we heard earlier was that under no uncertain terms would it be outside of executive office. Just to clarify, is that, is that true? Is there any, is there any way in which this might be considered executive office use?
The Addiction Recovery Center, would it be, could it be considered executive office use?
Yeah, I mean, I guess what I'm asking is just for, just to clarify what I thought we already heard at the beginning, which is that under no conditions would this, what's being proposed, be considered executive office use, despite Mr. Knapp's suggestion that it is executive office use?
Our, like Mr. Pepperoni said earlier, our belief is that these are two separate land, land use issues, and one falls under the purview of executive office. This unfortunately does not. This is a behavioral treatment center, which is how it's classified, addiction recovery kind of thing.
Right.
That is a separate land use in our ordinance.
There's really no debate to be had about, about that?
I don't think in this venue.
Okay.
I only mean this to be informative, not preventative, but it's not the land use that we propose to change with regard to the restrictive covenant. I mean, that is, we're here for a land use change, a conditional use permit. But this restrictive covenant is a separate issue, and what we're doing is nothing more than having executive offices. That's all we're doing there. I don't think that's the land use issue.
I think we fundamentally disagree with you, Mr. Knapp.
Mr. Chair, I have a comment. The item before us is for a conditional use permit under Land Use 6515, which falls under the treatment category, not under the 6390, which is more of a business service. So on, just on the merits of what's before us, it's a conditional use permit for, and for a program that is not approved as far as the restrictive covenant is concerned.
Correct. Okay.
And it doesn't matter whether it would be a drug and alcohol treatment center. That's, that's irrelevant. That has really no bearing on the issue. It could be a dentist office, it could be a chiropractic office. It's only seeing two clients a day, but as long as those clients are coming in and going, then that would then violate that covenant. So it has nothing to do with the nature of the services being provided under the land use.
Or where our hearts are at when it comes to-
Correct.
-drug treatment. Okay. Is there any additional public input? Okay. I'll return the conversation then to the Planning Commission, and then look for a motion.
I'm happy to make a motion. Mr. Chair, I would like to motion that we would, let me try to say this exactly right, because this is just a conditional use permit, so this is not, this particular issue does not need to go before council.
No.
So I would recommend that we deny Mr. Orm's request for approval of a conditional use permit for an outpatient program under Land Use 6515 Behavior Drug and Alcohol Treatment located at 890 East Quail Valley Drive in the professional office zone in the Sherwood Hills neighborhood. And what, as part of my motion, would include the findings of the city as part of the, the staff report, as well as the information we've received from the neighborhood chairs as part of this meeting this evening.
Mrs. Wynden with a second. Okay, all in favor of the motion, please indicate. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to hear number item three. Kevin Fairbanks, representing Pie House LLC, requests a zone change of .31 acres from residential conservation to general downtown. The property is located at approximately 245 North, 500 West. No changes to the property are proposed with this zone change request. This is in the Dixon neighborhood, and we'll be hearing from Brian Maxfield, who's presenting this item.
Sorry, get that on. We've got illustrations that are in your staff report, but we also have some air photos that might illustrate a little bit more. One on the left shows the general plan, and then the one on the right shows the current zoning. We did talk about that in the staff report, that even though the borders don't exactly follow, in terms of general plan, there are provisions in the general plan that talk about, we call adjustments to the line, everything else, that it wouldn't be exact. Because of that, we didn't feel there was a necessary reason to really hold a general plan hearing, and you're not really changing the nature of that area. It's not introducing it further into the block in the sense of down the street or some other area. So it is really looked at as strictly just a zone change. In regards to the DT-1 zone, you can see the underlying's commercial where DT-1's down here to the south, or at least the downtown designation on the general plan. If you look at the general plan, a lot of that is because this is more restrictive, and in the sense that they don't want general commercial uses to encroach into this area. DT-1 could encroach this way because that's one of the uses listed in the commercial zone that you could change to. But you would not want a general commercial to encroach into the DT-1, or into the downtown area. So if you can understand, in a sense, DT-1 could go in commercial, but, but general commercial couldn't go in downtown. And so for those reasons, we'd looked at including the entire property. You can see from the current use, it has the RC zone on the, on the property. And Mr., or Kevin, Kevin's got his property to the south, too, that owns, and so he'd like to really consolidate those, those properties into one, the same parcel. It would facilitate eventually that he might be able to add a couple of units to that. He'd have to qualify to be able to do that. He does have over 20,000 square feet through the site. Are there any questions?
Any questions for staff? Mr. McKinney?
Not right now.
No, okay. Okay, we invite Mr. Fairbanks to, applicant, to present.
I have a few handouts if I can.
Okay, sure.
Thank you. My name is Kevin Fairbanks, and I am the owner of a commercial and two multiple residential properties on 500 West. These properties are right next to A1 Vacuum, if you want to get your bearings, on Second North, 500 West. I would like to discuss two of these properties with you. The commercial property is located at 221 North, 500 West, and is in the DT-1 zone. This is right next door to the vacuum shop. The residential property is located next door at 245 North, 500 West, and is in the RC zone. Both these properties face 500 West. The zone designations are from the zoning map, and our proposed use changes are permitted in the DT-1 zone. These two properties are tied together by an access easement that runs east and west between them and serves as access for both of the properties. I would like to combine the lots and have both properties in the DT-1 zone. The current use of the properties are as follows. The 221 North, 500 West property next to the vacuum shop is in the DT-1 zone and currently has three residential units. I'd like to take this to four units. The property unit at 245 North, 500 West is in the RC zone and currently has five residential units and also an office totaling six. I would like to change this to six residential units and no office. If the zone were granted, the physical outside appearance of the buildings would not change for the- the physical outside appearance of the buildings would not change for the two houses. I currently have more than adequate parking. That would remain the same if the zones were approved. The number of parking spaces required is 15. I have a total of 21, which is six more than required. Parking would not be an issue. I have owned these properties for approximately 23 years, and have kept them up to a standard that has been a complement to the neighborhood. I monitor my tenants to ensure they are not ones to disrupt the neighborhood. I would appreciate your consideration in regarding this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fairbanks. Any questions for applicant from the Planning Commission? Okay, doesn't look like there's any questions right now. Thank you very much.
I would like to commend the applicant for putting together a very thorough proposal before us. It's
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done. Okay, is the neighborhood chair from the Dixon neighborhood here, and like to speak. Let's state your name.
Corey Robertson. I'm Dixon Neighborhood Vice Chair.
Great.
Okay. We are pretty much in agreement that we're fine with what he's proposed. There was some concerns of changing the downtown one zoning and the buffering and all the potential hazards that it could cause in the future, that we just don't know about. So that there was some expression of concern. At first, we didn't want it to go. He tried to see about down zoning, and then they talked about a development agreement, so that someone couldn't buy the property in the future and then just put a sky rise in place of it, but would have to come to the community first. That was discussed. That actually went through. But other than that, our only concern was the potential harm that a DT-1 could cause or problem. I don't even know if harms are. Yeah, that was it.
Thank you very much. Are there any other neighborhood chairs present who would like to speak to this item? Invite you to come forward. Okay, open it up to the public. Are there any members of the public, general public, who'd like to speak to this item? Invite you to come forward as well. Mr. Maxfield.
Yes, ma'am.
We'll now close this item to the public comment, and Mr. Maxfield wanted to say something.
I just wanted to bring up the fact that because of the transitional requirements that exist in the ordinance, that would restrict a lot of the height and other development through this area. So there are other restrictions because they are next to residential on that other side.
If somebody bought it and tried to redevelop it.
Right. Thank you. Okay, we'll return this item to the Planning Commission for discussion, and after the discussion, I'll look for a motion, or look for a motion if there is no discussion.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for staff.
Mr. McKinney.
Brian, a question. There is an, there's a kind of an alley that runs back behind the two buildings that connects to 200 North. Does that go all the way through? I drove in the parking lot, but I didn't go all the way down the little dirt road area there. Is that, is that inappropriate?
You can't.
I mean, not that you can't. I mean, I mean, it can, but is that a legitimate or a legal?
It goes through, if you can see the properties, through this one right here.
Yeah.
That is an RC area, and so it is outside that DT-1. As an access, it's not restricted by that, but they couldn't build, you know, change that zone to a higher density. A lot of that ties back. You can see further to the west, there's another property that ties back to the other one that ties in on State Street. But this one could go out this way. I believe that property's actually even owned by that person in the north, if I'm not mistaken, you know, the same ownership. So there are, there are ways to do that, yes. It ties back to 200 North.
Okay.
I'm sorry, was that the question?
The question was, is it, is it, is it a legal ingress and egress from that property?
It is. It's existed that way, and it's.
Okay.
Any other discussion among the commission? Okay, I'll look for a motion. Mr. Flung.
I move to turn on my microphone. I move that we forward a positive recommendation to the municipal council in favor, or forward a positive recommendation regarding item number three. Kevin Fairbanks, representing Pi House LLC, requesting a zone change of .31 acres from residential conservation to the DT-1 zone for the property located at approximately 245 North, 500 West.
Look for a second.
Second.
Mr. Jensen, all in favor of the motion? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, forward a unanimous positive recommendation on the motion to the municipal council. Item number
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Now here, item number four. Provost City Community Development Department requests review and recommendation of the southeast neighborhood, neighborhoods plan, which includes the Provost, Provost South and Spring Creek neighborhoods. Austin Corey will present this item to us.
Thank you. As you may recall, in February of this year, we brought this plan before you and discussed more of the details of it then, and went through some of the intricacies and recommendations of that plan. So, in an attempt to not belabor the discussion, I wanted to just highlight what's occurred since then, and some of the key changes that have happened to the plan since then. So, this slide is just to give you an idea of some of the discussions that had, that has happened with the advisory committee. These were actually prior to your February meeting as well, but there, there was a number of in-depth things that we talked about throughout the process that have kind of helped to feed the recommendations that you end up finding in the plan. So since your February meeting, the advisory committee requested that the plan be placed on hold until they could assemble some further comment and some more specific recommended changes that they wanted. We were able to finally meet with them in April of this year, where they expressed some of the concerns that they had, that they felt the plan wasn't addressing. We made those revisions and posted the plan back online, seeking public comment, did a social media blast, and asked the neighborhood chairs to spread that as well, to continue to try and elicit some of that feedback, which was a large purpose of our February meeting, if you recall, too. We didn't ask for a motion at that time. We were trying to make sure that this plan was out and available, and that people were aware of it, and that we got appropriate feedback to get the information that we needed. So the revisions, the big revisions that occurred since then is primarily in land use, were the, the discussions that occurred there. So, there, on page 17 and 22 of the original plan, if we can go ahead and move the plan over. Thank you. You'll notice in the, the top right of this page, there's now a, some paragraphs about medium-density residential and a batching overlay. Those did not exist in the original planning document. There was an area to the west of State Street. We'll go to the future land use map. You can see the kind of light orange color on the west side of State Street there that's now shown as MDR, and there's a hatch pattern over that, referring to a batching overlay. That originally in, in the plan was LDR with a mixed-use overlay, trying to achieve a critical density, hoping to meet some of the other goals that the neighborhood had expressed that they wanted, specifically for some local retail conveniences and things like that closer in proximity to them. In meeting with the advisory committee, they felt like that recommendation fell short of, of a secondary purpose of that, which was to alleviate some of the investment pressures that are happening in the single-family detached areas. And so, they felt like an MDR recommendation, and actually opening it up to batching overlays that would increase the density even higher, and allow specific demographics that have found a good place to call home there, allow appropriate things to be built there for them, in hopes that that would then relieve some of the pressures, those investment pressures that are happening. So that was probably the biggest change that has occurred since that time, or since your February meeting and in conversation with the applicants, or with the advisory committee, sorry. The other is, in the transportation section at the end, so this is on page 33 of the document, we've added a section about parking management. That was a concern that was brought up. There were, there were some, there was some information about that and some recommendations towards it, but the advisory committee and actually other input that we received since then has, had expressed that parking really needed to be emphasized as a bigger problem, and there needed to be better recommendations for where we go from here as to what we do. So those are, like I said, those are the big key things. I did, did just recall one other with the future land use map. So, so that's what we revised and then took to another neighborhood meeting. In that neighborhood meeting, there was one piece of property that was kind of critical, and some developments have occurred since then, that we wanted to specifically discuss at that neighborhood meeting, and that was the old county jail property. So, on this screen, on the left-hand, the graphic on the left-hand display, it's kind of the strange-shaped R1 property that's shown as R1. Thank you.
Right there.
Right there at the bottom right of that page. So, that piece of property, in analyzing the Slate Canyon area master plan, it called for a mixed-density residential type of a development, something that would bring multiple different housing types into one product, and work through development that way. The development since that time and the feedback we got at that neighborhood meeting was that the Slate Canyon area master plan recommendation was not what the neighborhood wanted, and that it was going against the other goals and policies that they felt were more important. So as part of that, since that meeting, we then took and have revised this plan to simply show it as single-family detached to match the surrounding areas there. The, the repercussions of that, for lack of a better word, is that one of the key recommendations that's now been updated in this plan is that this plan will supersede and override the Slate Canyon area master plan as it becomes obsolete. If the recommendations aren't the same, we don't want two different plans that are recommending different things, and so we are recommending that the Slate Canyon area master plan be removed from the general plan as an appendix, because this document covers not only what it was trying to address, but also larger issues as well. So, those are the key issues. I'm happy to answer any other technical questions or any small changes that have happened, if you want to dive into them. Otherwise, I, I believe you've been sent the document in advance and have probably thoroughly read it, so.
Okay. Are there any initial questions for Mr. Corey?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Corey, so depending on how the, the public comment goes in our own discussion, would we need to make kind of two motions? One, to forward a positive or negative recommendation regarding the master plan for the southeast neighborhood, and then the second part, to have that override the Slate Canyon, or can you just do it all in one fell swoop? I mean, because you don't want to approve it and then have two on the books, so to speak. You want to have the southeast one override the slate. Is that correct?
So, so this is a planning-level document, so it doesn't actually make any changes. So it, it wouldn't remove the Slate Canyon area master plan just by approving it. But at the backside of this plan, the very last page, page 35, you will notice that this plan has an implementation schedule, and what it, what it basically directs us to do is, if this is adopted as policy, which is actually done at the council level, not here.
Right.
But if this is adopted, one of the steps
Oh, the first phase.
That becomes subsequent to that is to
Remove the Slate Canyon. Oh, okay, I see.
And that would happen to later date then?
Correct.
By the city council, as if this is adopted.
Correct. Got it.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff, before we hear from the public? Okay, open it up to any of the chairs from the Provost, Provost South, or Spring Creek neighborhoods are here. Invite them to come forward first. We'll state your name and where you're at.
Richard Holmes, Provost Neighborhood Chair, also part of the Citizens Advisory Committee for this plan. Made some important changes since we met last time. Couple of things that maybe could still be added. Find it here. Where it lists the concerns. Trying to find the right page. We noticed that it, it doesn't, one, one of the biggest concerns we have in the neighborhood is the batching singles problem, the over occupancy of the apartments, the overcrowding with the parking, and it doesn't mention that anywhere in the concerns. Although it does mention later in the document a plan to alleviate some of that. And so, that's just something that may want, you may want to add to that area. When you go to page, page 17, where it talks about the batching overlay, I think it's important that when we raise the threshold to six singles per unit, that we also remember that the parking requirement needs to be increased to accommodate the extra automobiles that would be there as well. Other than that, there is a recommendation that a new neighborhood be established. That wasn't a discussion or recommendation from the advisory committee. I guess that's from staff, so we really haven't looked at that. I don't know that that needs to be done. In fact, looking at Spring Creek neighborhood right now, I don't know that that would be a good idea, but it's something that could be looked at, I suppose.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Holmes. Other neighborhood chairs that wish to come forward?
My name is Emily Rawls. I'm a vice chair of the Provost South neighborhood. And honestly, I kind of would just like to reiterate what was just said, truthfully. Make sure that there is definitely adequate parking for that batching overlay of six is what the decision is to be, to relieve the current zoning problems that we're seeing in that area. We really like the R1 where the old county jail is. We strongly recommend that. There's some very strong feelings against adding any more multifamily and, and multi-single-use residences in the area. And just once again, there's this new neighborhood that's being proposed in here that most of us are fairly unaware of, and would just like some further clarification on that.
Thank you. Ms. Rawls.
Mary Miller, Spring Creek Neighborhood Chair and Southeast Area Council Chair. At first tonight, I thought, you know, I had these thoughts, but what would be the point of sharing them? Because, you know, in view of some of the things that have happened in the past, oftentimes there's little, little belief that anything that could be said would change anyone's mind at this point. I think Austin and the staff have done a great job trying to get this done, but I think there are some things that have been missed. And, and we've talked about a few of them. In fact, Austin and I talked about the possibility of dividing that neighborhood, Spring Creek, to be included in the Provost South somehow. But, but everything is kind of a mess now, because, you know, most people automatically think the school carries the neighborhood's name. The school does not carry the neighborhood's name. The school, Spring The school, Spring Creek Elementary, is located in Provost South. Spring Creek, our most notable occupant or designation, I guess is a better word, is the cemetery. That takes up a goodly portion of the Spring Creek neighborhood. If we were to divide the Spring, the Spring Creek neighborhood as outlined in the plan, Mountain Vista Lane, which, and I've been in front of you many times on things that happened down on Mountain Vista Lane, there are six original homeowners down there still. And once more, we would be lopped off and put somewhere else because no one wants us. And the bottom line is, State Street is a very dividing street. To put that street in the middle of a neighborhood seems problematic. You know, there has been much time put into defining a healthy neighborhood, and the sad truth is that nowhere, as the definition of a healthy neighborhood has been discussed recently at a neighborhood seminar, does it ever include how development impacts that healthy neighborhood. So the bottom line is, you know, the scope at the very beginning of this plan, if you look at it, and that is on page three, it says the scope looks at land use, zoning, transportation, urban design, and parks and open space. Nowhere in here do we consider the social organizations that exist, whether, whatever those be, whether it be singles, you know, young professional adults, where they live, how they live, what are their needs as far as housing is concerned. It is not specifically addressed. And so this, the scope of all of this leaves out the people. How do you staff wards, family wards, single wards, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? If you don't take all of that into the plan. So I think what's been done thus far is good, but I think to adopt it now would be premature. I think we need just a little bit more time to iron out those few little wrinkles and get that squared away. Richard Holmes brought up the concerns about not, not truly addressing the young, single professionals who reside in southeast Provost. So again, you know, that, that needs to be, I think, a little bit more, because you give, you give notice to it in one place, but it's not spoken of in the concerns, and that was one of the most important concerns, was letting them feel apart and yet not having that negatively impact the other people in those neighborhoods. So I think there's, I would just beg at this point for a little bit more time to work out those few things that, that haven't been addressed, because no matter how great the plan, if you don't have a way to enforce it, what good is the plan? And we seem to be moving forward a lot, and I say this from a neighborhood standpoint, from the Spring Creek standpoint, you know, we're moving forward saying, yes, do this development, do this development, and along State Street, it's not a problem. But when you impact people's lives in a very limited area, it is a problem. And so we need to look more, a little bit more to the future, future rather, and be absolutely certain that what we're doing is good for everyone. And, you know, I look, again, I mean, we would have to be deaf. Okay. Enough. You have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. There's anyone from the public, general public, invite you to come forward and comment on State your name, where you live.
Hi, my name is John Finley. I'm a resident of Provo and founder of ProVault Makerspace. I think adaptive reuse into a Makerspace of the old jail building at 1776 Buckley Lane would be appropriate, and I would support a general plan that reflects property's current zoning for public facility use. Great address, by the way. Inverting the jail, by having a central place for high-tech equipment, you bring technically savvy people of all demographics together, and the cross-pollination of ideas that occurs in a Makerspace, in Makerspaces cannot be replicated by any other type of organization or facility. Converting the jail property to residential would create a small, isolated pocket of residential in an otherwise solid block of public facility use. Most of those public facilities are not open to the general public and essentially become off-limits or are completely unused areas for the people living nearby. In contrast, the facility we propose would be a welcoming community center where everyone is welcome. The grounds would contain public gardens, and the building would contain public workshops and a science museum. A great way to get to know someone well is to help them work on an interesting personal project and learn something new together. When was the last time you had that opportunity with your neighbors or a nearby stranger? An opportunity to learn a new skill like soldering, or pottery, or woodworking, or welding? People work alone in their garages and explore while in school, then stop learning. In the survey we did of residents to the east, we had an overwhelmingly positive response. Somehow the city had different results in their conversations. I'd like the opportunity to meet with and attend a neighborhood meeting and present the ProVault plan in here and address any concerns people have. As many people I talked to didn't know what a Makerspace was and the opportunities it can provide. They also didn't realize this was a possibility. I want to live in a place where serendipitous interactions are common, and there are few opportunities left to build something like that here in Provo without another multimillion-dollar bond. The jail is one of those opportunities, and the RCB Sears Building is another. Many grants of hundreds of thousands of dollars would, would be available to our organization for renovation if either one were transferred to us. As a public charity, we have the public good in mind, and we would welcome anyone interested to join our board of directors and help chart the course of our organization. I'm currently part of a nascent organization that is forming in the aftermath of a huge gathering of Makerspace organizers that met at the White House in Washington, DC, three weeks ago. We're trying to form best practices and guidelines for projects that will take place across the nation. We are all trying to share with each other how to build great spaces for our communities. We're trying to put our efforts into our biggest opportunities, and a fantastic space like this is worth the effort to try to save. If anyone would like to know more, I have copies of our two previous proposals for this property with me, and I also have our awesome box that contains some of the things we have made at the Makerspace. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Dave Connect, and as a resident and former neighborhood chair, I'd like to give you a little feedback and perspective. A couple of weeks ago, I was doing some repairs on a church by Amelia Earhart Elementary, which is the West State State Center, and I had never met the state president who came up and introduced himself, and I said, "Well, gee, I'm also on the city council. Can you tell me, do you have any needs or challenges from your point of view?" And he says, "Well, we sure do." And I thought, you know, maybe he'd talk about the streets or the parks or something, but it wasn't about the physical environment or the amenities in the neighborhood. It was about the fact that, he says, "We have a loss of leadership. When families get big enough, they move away because the homes are too small, and so we don't have any mature families, and we don't have that leadership that we need." And that, that highlights to me the importance when we're planning a neighborhood or a community, that we look at the existing mix of the housing, the structure where people are living, because if we don't have the right mix of like starter homes, which is what he was talking about, and not enough move-up homes for the larger families, then you don't have a really functional community. And we talk about having housing within an area or a neighborhood to meet the different stages of your life, and certainly in the southeast, we have a large number of singles that have decided that, for various reasons, that that's the place that they're going to live until they maybe get married or whatever. That's just one of the unique things going on in southeast Provo. So I would just say that on this scope, I would agree with Mary, that we need to consider the health of the neighborhood from the perspective of the social organizations that are trying to function, whether it be the PTA, or the church, or the neighborhood. And finally, I'd say that all the planning in the world doesn't do any good if, for example, Slate Canyon Drive was built twenty years ago, and Candace is one of the original owners there, and she has seen, realtors come in and say, "Well, gee, this is a neighborhood in decline." And it's because of changing uses, largely because of lack of enforcement, and lack of maintenance on the properties. And so if we don't have a way to maintain a standard, whether it be occupancy or even the look and feel of the neighborhood, then it changes for the worse, and we lose, we lose what we planned for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Connect. Additional input from the public? Okay, we'll return the conversation to Planning Commission. Any comments from the Planning Commission about the, about the plan, Southeast Neighborhoods Plan?
Was there any redress from the staff with respect to some of the comments related to-
Sure. Mr. Corey?
Yes, thank you. So if I missed something that you'd like me to address, please let me know, but from what I wrote down, I just wanted to point out the areas of the plan where we feel like it is addressed. The first comment being about the Concern section not listing the issues faced with over-occupancy of the buildings. On page fourteen, under the Concern sections, it says, it lists the most prominent concerns, and the last of those says disjointed property values between non-owner occupied investment properties and owner occupied property owners within existing single-family neighborhoods. So we feel like we did address that. If we, if we need to reword that, please let us know. But that is in there. With regards to the realignment of neighborhoods, again, this is a recommendation that's in the plan. As a matter of fact, so to speak to Mrs. Miller's concern, I, I actually completely agree with her. There is a little pocket of residential that's down there in the Old Ironton area, right? So the, the homes that she's speaking about are right here. So currently, the existing neighborhood boundaries, Spring Creek is long and narrow, so the other, the other homes for the neighborhood are all up here in this northern part. So our recommendation was actually to try and get additional residents around there that have similar proximity to the same concerns that they might be facing. Again, it's just a recommendation, and as a matter of fact, this, the very last paragraph on that page specifically notes that it's just one of many possible reconfigurations. And really, the recommendation of this plan is actually that a readjustment of neighborhood boundaries be studied. That's outside of the scope of this document, but we wanted to point out that there may be a way to actually facilitate including them in a, in a more inclusive neighborhood that's representative of where they're at.
So the language referring to figure 2.6 is right there. This is one of many possible reconfigurations. That's not tended to be the reconfiguration. That's just pointing out the issue.
We, we agree with the comment as well about the need for parking to be addressed. Two areas on this page specifically talk to that. The, in the, this is actually in the LDR section, but it points out, "Until additional transit opportunities become available to relieve the auto-dependent nature of the area, off-street parking requirements should be expected to meet the non-family occupancy found in existing ordinances." So similar to that, the MDR would be, would follow that same recommendation. There's already existing ordinances. We did discuss those with the advisory committee after the February meeting. We talked about parking and what kind of requirements there are in the existing ordinances. At least the limited amount of feedback that we got felt like the existing ordinance requirement of non-family occupancy was adequate. But again, that would be, any future developments and things that follow behind this plan would be required to meet those. So we absolutely expect additional parking to be required because of that batching overlay. I believe that's addressed everything primarily that I had on there. I guess the only other thing to point out with the jail property, because we did go to that neighborhood meeting with most of these revisions, with the jail property left out. We left that meeting and then issued another online survey to the residents, and specifically, it was, it was solely devoted towards just that jail property, and the feedback we've received has been overwhelmingly in favor of R1 development. So we do understand that that's not necessarily everyone's 100% agreement and opinion, but from the feedback we were able to obtain, that's what we heard.
Thank you. Yes, Mrs. Willen.
I have a question. So in discussing with the neighborhood, the MDR along the west side of State Street, did y'all discuss increased traffic going towards BYU, going up Ninth East or up Seventh East, and discuss any of that? I mean, not everybody that, that would move down there would be a student, but I'm sure that some would, and did that come up at all in y'all's discussions?
Yeah, absolutely. As far as the capacity of the street and what, that, that area west of State Street is about the only undeveloped property in the area. Most of it is vacant. It's primarily zoned right now as manufacturing uses, but hasn't been utilized in that way. But the, the local road network that exists in there is absolutely discussed in the plan, making sure that there's adequate street connections and some circulation patterns that don't rely primarily on State Street and don't all exit to one street or things like that. Beyond that, as far as Ninth East, the, the capacity for that street is already there for the amount of traffic that would be expected to come off of what would develop in that area. Does that answer your question?
Okay.
More or less?
Less.
Other observations or questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Austin, I appreciate your hard work on this, and I appreciate the comments and the neighborhood meetings and the time the residents have spent on this. I'm one of those individuals that tends to over-insure myself in any, every area of my life just because that's what I do. And I think much progress has been made, and I think you have addressed most of the concerns raised by the residents, and you've been able to point to that in the neighborhood plan. However, I'm also hearing from the residents that, well, it may be there, but they weren't aware of it, and it seems to me that it might be beneficial for both the residents of, of these neighborhoods as well as for the city to have, dare I say, one more opportunity, not necessarily for public input per se, but also to clarify and address with them these issues rather than saying, "Well, here it is." In this context, to have one more, not necessarily iteration, but to allow them to ask more questions and for you to clarify, and if we need to redo some wording in there to make it more obvious or notable that this is just one of many possible configurations or something else that may still be unclear. Would that be beneficial in the long run? I know these neighborhood plans, you know, you can bang these out really quickly within eighteen months or so, but would there be any harm in continuing this to allow one more opportunity for the neighborhood members, residents to meet and encouraging them to bring out, you know, rather than hearing from the same ten people, require them to bring three different people? Of course, that could just perpetuate the problem.
I think that's honestly probably a question for you as the commission to decide if you feel like that's valuable feedback or additional input that you need, and if you feel that way, I'm certainly willing to pursue that. I think that would basically just be worded in your motion.
Yep.
So I'm fully- So I'm fully supportive of whatever decision you would like.
You're kind.
Mrs. Jensen.
Thank you. My comment would be that I thought this was a very thorough, thought-through, compiled, public outreach and plan when we saw it in the spring. And you've now taken it and gone beyond and addressed the concerns that we heard from the public at that time, and I think addressed them quite well. So I would have to disagree with Mr. Flom. I think that it's a complete document at this point. And I would support a positive recommendation.
Any other comments? I have a few things that I wanted to add to what's been said. If there's anybody else? I think what I'm hearing from the public resonates a little bit with what I sense in terms of the way in which the kind of front matter, so to speak, corresponds to the kind of substance. There seems to be a few discrepancies, or maybe not even discrepancies, just kind of not flagging things up front, which is what I hear, at least to some degree, might be worth flagging up front. And I'll add, I think, just a little bit to what's already been said and maybe say a few more things. One of the things that I noticed was up front, not much of a, the role that public transportation might play isn't flagged at all up front. It was, it felt to me like an absentee. And I worried that it wouldn't be addressed at all, only to realize later. So this is, I'm looking on page six as the place where I would have expected to have been flagged. And then, let's see, yeah, page six. So the Transportation Master Plan, not much is mentioned there about the role that public transportation might play. Under the Transportation Master Plan, we have, you know, the conversation, items there about student shuttle systems, vans and car pools. And then on page 30, we have a fairly substantial, I mean, relative to the rest of the, you know, how long the document is, we have a fairly substantial section there on public transportation. So I wonder if that might just be worth flagging right up front. Another thing that I observed, several kind of comments or observations here, one of the things that this plan tries to juggle, as you mentioned in your presentation, Austin, was, on the one hand, kind of a fierce commitment to one family detached homes that seems to contradict, kind of contradict the desire for commercial opportunities, commercial development. I wondered if there was a way to just address that a little bit more clearly. Right now, on page 17, this contradiction or this tension is acknowledged. So in that, on page 17, under B, Commercial Office, during discussions with area residents, primary concern expressed was the desire to reduce automobile reliance and congestion on State Street. One key to reducing automobile reliance is to provide local convenience within walking or biking distance. So automobile trips will become unnecessary for daily task. You'd identify two commercial nodes. And then go on to say, although zoning can reflect the desire for community scale conveniences, it is also important to understand that the viability of these nodes will rely heavily on sufficient housing density to support these uses, balancing the need for sufficient residential rooftops to encourage commercial development. With desire for low-density detached housing will be an ongoing challenge for this area. So I love that it's, we're kind of alerted of that tension. I just wondered if there was anything more specific or precise to say than, you know, this needs to be, this will be an ongoing challenge. I don't know in your conversations or if I'd even thought, you know, is the batching overlay, you know, some way to address that tension potentially? Or if there's anything more specific to say about how the neighborhood might balance that tension, I just wondered if it might be useful. And I don't know if, again, if you already have things in mind that you're just not gesturing towards, or that you are gesturing towards but not kind of saying outright. I wonder if that might be useful. Maybe one more thing that I'll say, even though I have a few more notes. A meeting we had, I don't know, about a month and a half, maybe two months ago, about the possibility of kind of development higher up on the hillside in that area, made me wonder if there was a need to clarify the vision for Slate Canyon Development above the kind of the current waterline any more than we do. You do it on page four. I mean, you acknowledge that this is a concern. Just kind of glancing, I'm not sure that I see exactly where I thought it was. Oh, yeah. Established policies and ordinances is the third kind of arrow down from the general plan. Establish policies and ordinances that protect and enhance Slate Canyon. I don't know if we're at a position yet to do any of that a little bit more explicitly in this plan, establish policies and ordinances, or if that's something that would just happen, you know, if this is just alerting us to the need, and that would happen in the future. But I left the meeting where we talked about that pretty alarmed. I wasn't at the follow-up conversation, I was out of town. But I wonder if it'd be worth, you know, having a clearer vision there of what those policies and plans might look like. So again, these, right, and I noticed that it was taken up a little bit in the Sensitive Lands section on page 19. I just didn't know if that section fully acknowledged the kind of complexities that were raised for me when we had the meeting about that particular, you know, hypothetical project there. It seemed that, you know, here we have most of the focus on kind of seismic and geological concerns, preserving green, kind of open space, preserving the canyon. But it seemed to me that also there were, I had some pretty significant concerns about kind of the return on investment, the cost, the kind of long-term cost to taxpayers developing places like this for, you know, relatively low, again, what I think of as relatively low return on investment. So I just wondered if that section might be more substantial. Again, it's hard, I understand, to know how thorough. I mean, you want this to be a concise document. You know, if it's sprawling, it kind of ends up losing its purposes. And so I don't have, again, any really strong feelings about, you know, how much more I want. Those are just some things that I noticed that, as I was reading over the plan. But again, I agree with those on the Planning Commission, all that this is, this looks great. I love that we're doing these. These are my favorite things to talk about. I love that we're doing this, and I think there's great work being done here. Those are just my initial thoughts there. Okay. That killed it, the conversation, sorry. Any further discussion or anyone prepared to make a motion?
Well, I've got a couple of comments. You know, as I look at the plan, you know, it is a set of guiding principles. And so the moment we start getting down into the details and we start transforming it from a general plan to something a little bit more concrete. And I think that the guiding principles are there from my perspective to guide us through the process. And then as we get into the details, those will come before us in those moments in time when specific plans are put forward. And then we have got, we've got a roadmap from which we've asserted to the municipal council that is following, at least generally speaking, what we anticipate and what we expect for growth in these areas. So I'm indifferent to giving it another couple of weeks to make some refinements or moving forward. I don't necessarily know that materially it would impact dramatically or change dramatically the guiding principles that have been outlined so far.
Any other comments? Okay, I'll look for a motion.
I don't think you want me to make the motion. I think, as you said, you're indifferent about what one or two more weeks would buy. I think you're right. One or two more weeks wouldn't be the death knell of it, but I think it might help give a few more residents greater buy-in, more residents in there to have greater buy-in. And that's why I would advocate for continuing this item to the next meeting, which would be the 12th, I think is that the next available one? I'd have to look on the thing when it would be, or when they could have another meeting.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty, if they could, yeah, do that within that reasonable time.
The only thing that I would say, I think I understand what you're saying, and I wonder if a way to characterize this is not so much buy-in as clarification of certain things. If there's a way, I think what I hear you asking is, give residents an opportunity just to clarify, make sure that, you know, what they want clarified in the document that might already be lurking there.
Right, because that was the point that some of the residents made. And then Austin said, well, here it is, you know, and he did have it in the document. But to give them one more opportunity to hear from Austin before we just forward a positive recommendation on the municipal council.
Or to, you know, advocate for a very particular language. Here's what we would like to see under scope, or, you know, neighborhood plan goals, or whatever.
And I think all the big things are there.
Is that a motion?
I did not hear a motion.
I make a motion that we continue this item and to allow city staff to have another meeting or neighborhood meeting with the neighborhoods listed in the southeast plan to allow for increased clarification. And that would be my motion, and now Bill's going to say something.
Yeah, I think the issues have been explained. And if it's your feeling, a majority of the Planning Commission, that we need to make some amendments to the plan to address those, then we'll do that. I'd like to just make those changes and move on rather than go back to the neighborhood because we can circulate the new language and the new plan to those people who are here and to anyone else who wants to see it on the website or whatever. But I don't think we'll have another neighborhood meeting before the 28th. And we've been going through neighborhood meetings since last February. So we'd like to move on.
I would say, I was going to say a similar thing, is that I'm not sure that a neighborhood meeting would be as necessary as just, you know, as Mr. Pepperoni's explained. Given what we've heard here, opportunity to...
Well, that's, I thought it was striking that you looked to me to make a motion, given my opinion, so I made a motion.
I was looking at anyone.
Oh.
So can they put the changes on the website for people to? Is that what you were saying? I would second that.
So how would you like me, before you second the motion, I need to amend the emotion, because you currently have one on the floor.
So what I hear from Mr. Pepperoni and what I think you're, what I'm saying and what I hear you saying, Mrs. Winnon, is not necessarily a motion to take it back to the neighborhood. I'm not even sure that what I hear you saying, Bill, you're not suggesting not necessarily even continuing.
The item.
No, we're going to continue it to the 28th. We'll make changes as based on the input we researched.
Okay.
Make the...
Changes out to those who are here, plus the website. And we'll have it on the meeting on the 28th.
Okay, just no neighborhood meeting?
So it'll be heard publicly here in the Planning Commission on the 28th? Actually, I was going to suggest, Mr. Chair, if I may. We've got articulated from the neighborhood chairs and from the staff and from us in council here what those necessary requirement, required changes are. And so since they're not really materially changing the overall scope of the plan, they're just accentuating those areas where they were asking for some additional detail. Those details are in the meeting minutes that have been recorded. I might suggest that we would incorporate that into the motion.
Sure.
And just make a motion that we move it forward and then, but incorporate the changes that have been discussed as part of the meeting. So you would move, you would just move, we forward a positive recommendation to the municipal council? Inclusive of the changes that have been discussed here. And then we would not hear it on the 28th? That's just my...
And, I mean, just to add to that, because it will be heard again, this is not the last opportunity the neighborhood chairs or anyone from the neighborhood has to say they got it right or know that we feel like these concerns still aren't addressed.
So you do not need it, so you would not want it heard here then, again? You'd want it heard in the city council, that's what you were... I'm just making a recommendation that I think we've, that it's been articulated what the concerns are, and I think we could actually have those put into the plan that goes before municipal council.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor still. But, yeah, Mrs. Jensen. Do we want, does anyone want to second that motion or should we look for a new motion?
Which, I'm...
Mr. Flom's motion, made a motion. We had a discussion on that motion that, in my mind, to continue.
To continue it and bring it back on the 28th.
Right.
That's the motion.
That's the motion. The conversation since then has proposed the possibility of forwarding inclusive of the notes that have, and the comments here. And then the neighborhood would still, again, have a chance to comment on how accurately those concerns were reflected in the plan. But that would be heard next by the municipal council. Those are the kind of the two sides that I...
Right, so my recommendation is you'd have to vote on the first motion and then create a second motion and then vote on that.
Yep. So is there a second to Mr. Flom's motion? Okay.
And then it dies, correct.
I'll look for a new motion. Unless you wanted to...
No.
Mr. Chair, will make a motion? I motion that we would move, that we would move a positive recommendation to municipal council for item number four, where Provost City Community Development Department has requested a review and a positive recommendation for the Southeast Neighborhood Plan covering the Provost, Provost South and the Spring Creek neighborhoods. Would incorporate into my motion the city staff report as well as the enhancements to the existing plan as articulated by the neighborhood chairs and public that has been spoken of, incorporating the Planning Commission's comments and thoughts as part of that plan. That would, and also the recommendations that came forward from staff that were articulated. So that the objective would be is that all the changes and enhancements that we've discussed here as part of the meeting minutes would be incorporated into the plan that would be presented to the municipal council with that positive recommendation.
There's a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 All those opposed?
May.
Last item, item number five. Provost City Community Development Department requests an ordinance amendment to section 14.34.500, fencing standards for residential zones, proposing residential fencing limitations in yards along street frontages. Mr. Maxwell will present this item to us.
As a quick background, a reminder, this item really came from the Planning Commission to look at fencing requirements we have. I think it was initiated due to a discussion we had regarding one on Center Street. We looked at variations which dealt with the side yards on corner lots as to where the fence could be, and then also considerations for front yard fencing on certain situations like on along arterials or maybe even collector streets. You asked us last time to look at a lot of other city codes and see if we can find some advice that way. This is kind of a compilation, both, if you looked at the other side of the page too, it's two-sided. What we found out, there are a lot more issues probably than we cover in our zone that might be well to really do a total look at the entire fencing ordinance. We could certainly concentrate on a couple of those items if you desire, you know, the corner side yard and then the front yards. Or we could, you know, get into a lot of the other things where it gets in the materials. Or we could, you know, get into a lot of the other things where it gets in the materials, other situations. Either way, there's, there's probably further discussion development we need to have. For instance, on the side, on the corner, we talked about a, and even the front, I think we talked about a five-foot distance. So, it'd be allowance for vegetation. Notice there are a couple of here where it said the fence has to be a foot off the sidewalk, and then one says you even have to do concrete underneath. I think we discussed that in one of our meetings, whether or not we ought to go there. With the ten-foot distance, it's said in, in certain cities, we talked about a five, and, and again, there's no need that we've got to copy anybody, we can totally create our own. One interesting thing on that side, said on the corner lot, is some required it from the front yard where you had to have the four-foot fence, beyond that you could have six, so the side street on back. Other ones said you couldn't do that until the rear yard. So, your front yard and at least the side yard on a corner lot up to where the rear yard is would be open. And then others did it by clear vision areas, or at least those safety areas. Our current one, we, we've talked about bringing that back as a separate ordinance where it was twenty-five feet. One of these had sixty feet, one had even more than that. But I guess what I'm trying to say, there are different ways to handle that on different details. And what we're looking for tonight, and again, I'm trying to keep this somewhat short, because there is so much, I think more we want to consider, that you look at this list, get ideas, come back and refine that, and we'll keep refining it down, and, and get a little more specific than what we've got here. This is really more of a shotgun approach from different ordinances and pulling out common elements or ideas or thoughts, just to put it in front of you. One that we haven't thought about was the columns. I think at Broadview Shores, that probably would have been a good one to have, you know, because they've got some fencing that goes along the main street. If you required that every third post be a column, a brick column or something, or can sometimes add a lot to a look, you know, things like that. So, I'll just let it go where you want to take this, and, and let me know what you'd like us to do.
Any questions from Mr. Maxfield?
So, are you looking for recommendations from us for specific areas, or specific bolded sections to drill down?
Yes, and it doesn't have to be tonight. I mean, if you've got ideas tonight, we'll incorporate those, but the idea over the next couple of weeks, and, and this isn't scheduled for your twenty-fourth or eighth meeting, whatever that is, so it'd have to be on, you know, like the October meeting. But then, get ideas back to us, that we can try and incorporate and, and get more of a draft set up, so you can really start looking at it in detail. Things I'd say to also go notice are some of these issues, as you look around and say, okay, that looks good to me, this doesn't, why? You know, we talked about the vegetative fence, a great example, that's at BYU. If you go around their athletic fields, they've got six-foot, eight-foot hedges right up to the sidewalks, and say, is that good or bad? I don't know.
Mr. Maxfield, do you have in here somewhere as a bullet point those, oh, the concrete fences? Is that, I'm just trying to see if that's...
It's only materials, where it talks about fencing materials. But that would be where that would be, you know, could be brought out, decorative concrete or something. You know, a lot of them, for instance, you rare, you don't want to necessarily put plastic up into a heavily traveled street setback, just because of the rocks from the snowplows or, or the snow itself will just knock those to pieces. You know, so there's, there's durability, whether that's concrete, and then you get into concrete, a decorative and colored, you know, goes that whole gamut, I think, what the height would be, where you would use that, where you would require it to be used. Certainly, I wouldn't say, you know, for instance, between industrial areas, that seem logical, you know, residential, industrial. You wouldn't allow that as maybe the option on a, a front yard against an arterial street, except, well, in a different height or different configuration.
I'm just thinking of the new, so when you're asking for suggestions, I'm just thinking of the new development in Provo that's in Provo, but was approved through Orem Planning Commission, the one over on, what is that, two thousand?
Oh, two thousand.
Two thousand, and they had that concrete wall.
Or sixteen hundred, it's, went up in Grandview, in the far north of Grandview, yeah.
So, but it's in Provo, but it went through Orem, and they have those, it's a, it's a decorative concrete canvas, I suppose you could call, I mean, it's not a canvas for taggers, but, but for that, and, and I'm wondering, you know, that would be one I would just want to see, that would have some sort of examination.
Okay, we'll get pictures of that and make some comments on that.
Mr. McKinney?
Oh.
Was that a hint?
I got called first. No, so, well, the last time we had it, we addressed this was for a specific infraction that the person was looking for, that there was a solid concrete fence that went right up to the sidewalk. And it was really helpful, Brian, when you had examples of, you know, this one would have been approved based on the current, you know, standards, and this one would have been rejected based on the current standards. It almost would be, and I, I'm even willing to participate in this, to, to go around and take pictures of, of the walls that, that I'm uncomfortable with.
Fence.
Fences, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we need to see the ones you're uncomfortable with, as much as we want to see the ones you're, you are comfortable with.
Right, so that, you know, I think if there was a concerted effort to kind of put together, you know, a montage of these things, so that we could put it in context to saying when something is six feet off a sidewalk, or five feet from a sidewalk, because the other part of that conversation was, where's the measurement start from?
That's right.
You know, and so, when you've got, you know, a parking strip, I mean, excuse me, you've got the, the grass strip, I forget what the proper name for that is, then the sidewalk, and then the front yard. And so, is it measured from the actual sidewalk, or from the street, from the curb and gutter, or from the property line, which could be out in the middle of the street? And so, there were, there were so many different variables, there's, we were trying to come up with some mechanism from which to have consistency, and not have someone build something that, you know, none of it, no one likes, and then only to find out that it actually is approved, but based on the...
Aesthetics.
Yeah, so...
You know, one of the other things you notice in here, it introduces retaining walls, because we really haven't talked about those. I know of areas where the front yard has an eight-foot retaining wall, because it did not, so you couldn't do that. It wasn't really a fence, it wasn't really anything else, but so they could flatten their front yard out equal with the home. So, I think there are some things we need to address. We've got some very large retaining walls in the foothills. Should we require those to be terraced, or some other methods, you know, things to look at? And then that gets into the backyards, that, you know, we've commonly had neighbors sometimes be concerned, because the guy builds a six-foot fence on his side, but down on the lower side, it's a twelve-foot fence. And whether that's good or bad, you know, they're looking all the way up a hill. So, there are some other, and that's why I say other things, so, don't just, look at all those strange things you think could be added even into this kind of a thought. I, I think all of those help. We do have a, a number of pictures, we've been compiling and assembling, so we'll try and do that.
I, I agree with Kermit's suggestion that if we all notice, I mean, we all have cameras on our phones, so as you're going about your day, if you see something particularly horrendous or fantastic, go ahead and take a photo, and we can, you know, compile those for you.
And to go, and to complement that, who do we send those to? Where, where would be kind of a consolidation?
I think if you want to just email them to me, and I'll compile them that way, would that be okay?
Okay.
If you don't have my email, it is B. Maxfield, so B. M.A.X.F.I.L.D. at provo.org.
Do we need to specify in that email that text whether this is a fence that you like?
Yes, tell me whether you like it or don't.
If you don't care for it, you send it to Kerry Wallace, too.
What's that? Oh.
Send it to Kerry for coded portion.
Intuitive as to whether it was a positive fence or a negative sort of fence, but I guess beauty is in the eye of the beholder.
And certainly, if, if there's just a question, it rises because of, okay, would this be allowed, or how would we address this? That's what we need to hear.
Right.
You know, let's try and make it as comprehensive as we can, if that's okay, and something that, that doesn't just kind of substitute one thing, and it causes a series of problems in a different way, so...
I just have a question.
Sorry, Mrs. Winton.
That's okay, maybe this is a dumb question. The very last thing on the back of the page, what is switch beer? Is that...
Oh, it's a utilities boxes, basically, that they've got to get to and open and change things like in a traffic signal, you know, that you get in. Public utilities had asked us about this, because they were concerned, when we started talking about these fences, that they've got access, because all of a sudden they get a fence right against a piece of equipment they have to do something to. And, you know, so I think that's an important thing. This is not the exact input from our public utilities yet, but we would, you know, like to refine that on their desires, and really look at the different types of access issues they may have. But it, you know, this, trying to avoid this one, I, I know we've talked about whether or not you need a permit for a fence, and we've pushed not to do that, just for different reasons, but, you know, how do people know unless, you know, they go to put in their backyard fence that they were supposed to stay a certain distance off of a utility box or something like that?
Right.
So, somewhere, we would have to be able to get a lot of good information out, otherwise.
One other, this actually happened with a, a neighbor, is there, I didn't see anything on here about meter reading. He put up a fence and then had to actually put like a little, cut a cubby hole, or a cubby peak hole in there to allow for the meter reading.
To allow what?
For the meter reading.
Oh, for the meter reading, yes.
Yeah, so is there, does that, is that addressed?
Oh, that'd be clearance from utility structures, we could add that one.
Oh, water meter boxes, okay.
So...
But that would be for the individual yards, not like for the overall utility company, like the main one, but individual yards?
Yeah, so we could address besides the companies. That is one that, you know, gas companies used to hate, because if the meter's around a corner behind a fence, so they can't get to it. You know, it's so much easier, because they're walking quickly through a neighborhood, pay people to do that. Now, they read them electronically, for the most part. They'll drive by in a car, and it's clicking off, they, they do it. So, you, you rarely see meter readers anymore, but there may be reason to do that. Computers are amazing, I think.
Any other comments on this item for the discussion? Look for a motion? Mr. Flom?
I, thank you, Mr. Chair, I remember that we continue this item indefinitely.
There's a second?
Second.
Mr. McKinney, seconds. All those in favor of Mr. Flom's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to that motion? Okay.
And move to adjourn?
Okay, move to adjourn, any seconds?
Okay.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.